Start recording and then I will do. So this is the Maynard zoning board of appeals meeting, we're holding our meeting remote on Zoom. It is May twenty second, twenty twenty three, it's seven seventeen P M. And we'll call this meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to vote on the minutes of April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. I assume everybody has read those minutes and has any comments to add or not, so first. I need a a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three minutes of the Maynard zoning board of appeals.
Good, do we have any com- uh second Jerry seconds?
Second.
And any comments, any corrections?
Paige. I just had one question, I'm not sure of the spelling of um the shoe's last name, I think I saw it spelled differently on the prior set of minutes. S H E W versus S H U E. I'm not sure which one is correct, but.
I think it's S H E W.
Thanks.
Uh, I will, I will, I think, I think it is. I'm not positive, I will uh make that change, um well, let me look real quick and I can. I can um if you won't. Don't my waiting one second. One twenty three summer. And let's see. Oh, all the emails I got, I can't find theirs, wait a minute. Alright, S H E W, yes.
Good catch.
Good catch Paige, I'll make that change.
As amended.
Alright, so we need a vote. All in favor as amended? Yay, that's unanimous, good.
Thank you, everybody.
And so, just to check. Ryan, you're you're the Roosevelt people, right? Excellent, so we'll go directly into that petition here.
Yeah, I don't say Elizabeth, that that was not here, that's correct as of yet, Elizabeth Pearson.
So let me read the announcement here, special permit application filed by. Rhiannon Roberts and Pam Mullins thirty Roosevelt Street. Maynard, the applicant is requesting a special permit allowing replacement of a nonconforming deck. At this location, if granted, the new deck would duplicate or lessen the side setback encroachment and would not exacerbate the nonconformity. Subject property is a nonconforming, single family dwelling on a nonconforming lot in a general residence district. And so what I would like, I I can't pronounce that, is that Rhiannon?
Rhiannon, Rags with Shannon.
Thank you, if you would uh describe your request.
Sure.
And then we can ask you questions and so on and so forth.
Yep, so I made him a little PowerPoint, is okay for me to share my screen, just have some visual aids?
Sure, if if uh how do we do that, Bill, do you know?
I I can, it looks like I can just do. I'll try that.
You try it, see what happens.
Oh.
I might have to give you permission, I don't know, but if you can do it, go.
Uh, well, it says the host disabled the screen sharing.
Alright, here, I just, I just, um, it's enabled now.
Okay. Alright.
You should be able to.
Okay.
There you go.
Can you see this? Yeah. Okay. So I'm not a PowerPoint expert, but I'm just gonna do my best here. Um, so we are requesting a special permit to replace an existing deck that is in pretty significant disrepair. Um, basically, it it is on the left side of the house, if you're facing the house from Roosevelt Street, and it is um. Just show you some photos, and um so this is from our neighbor's driveway at twenty eight Roosevelt, and um. It is probably twenty years old or so, um, there is an addition on the house here where my mouse is, um. And then the foundation of the deck comes out, and I'm sorry, the foundation of the addition comes out under the deck. And um as you can see in the this photo, there's um. Missing pieces of the foundation, so we have some animal activity in the foundation, which is a problem. Um, but anyway, also, the wood is pretty rotted away, and it just needs to be replaced, so what we are proposing is um to actually tear down the side deck. And um to then. Put in a deck that's actually on the rear of the property here. Um, so the deck currently exists right here on the side, and so to get rid of that, it would lessen the encroachment onto twenty eight Roosevelt by about five feet. But then extend the nonconformity to in on that side, which would be ten point two feet. Um, so it would go further back into the backyard along their garage, but um it would be. Less close to their property, and then to build the deck in the back of our property, and actually, it would be a deck that we could. Um, as you can see in this photo, it's pretty small, and the deck that we're proposing to build would be a more usable space, we could have like a dining table out there or something like that. Um, and our neighbors at twenty eight Roosevelt and also the neighbors at twenty six Roosevelt have very similar. Situation in their backyard, and so it kind of fits in with. The neighborhood um and what other people have done with their backyards too. Um, and so this is a picture of the back of the house, and where we would build the deck would be. Here, this is the existing decks, we tear down these stairs and then build out here into this grassy area. Um. We don't, we wouldn't build further than eighteen feet from the house, but I doubt that we actually would build out that far, and even if we did build eighteen feet, we would still be within. The setback requirements for the rear um property line. Um, so the only nonconforming part is along the left side, um that ten foot. Um, diff- like the difference, um it should be, I guess, fifteen feet, so we're going five feet over the uh the setback. Um.
Well, well, I'm I'm confused, what are you talking about, is my feet over?
So, um, well, the house is currently, it violates the setbacks, the house is ten feet from twenty eight Roosevelt, it should be fifteen. And so we're not building past the line of the house, we're just building alongside the wooden house, so extending the nonconformity into the backyard. Taking down the deck that goes closer to the driveway of our neighbors. Does that make sense?
Chair, may I ask a question?
Um.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, ask the question.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, um, so it looks like the you're removing the steps that are creating the greatest nonconformity on the. The side setback, so you're reducing the nonconformity.
Yeah, we are, but then, so we're reducing the nonconformity, whoops, why did that, um? We are reducing the nonconformity here. And then building the deck. It will be longer, so. There will be a ten foot. Distance between the, I guess, this back corner of the deck and uh the property line. But yes, overall, reducing this whole situation alongside the house will be gone.
So to Bill's point, you're just, you're basically. Lessening the nonconformity.
Yeah, right.
But are you tearing down the um that foundation that's sticking out?
Yeah, so we have been, our contractor has brought his mason in, and so they will be, let's go back to that photo, so they, he will be rip taking this. Down and making it even with the house, so he will build out, he'll build the foundation under the house rather than have this kind of cinder block, this will all go away.
Good.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
So is that your presentation?
Um, pretty much, yeah. I I answered.
Silence there, I wonder what was happening.
Yep, so I can unshare my screen too, unless anybody wants to look at the uh surveyor.
Before you close this picture down, I like this picture. And it it goes to a question that Bill and I were debating in general last week. The difference between a special permit and a variance.
Mm-hmm.
And the way I'm looking at this is you're demolishing one. Item and building a similar item somewhere else on the property with absolutely no overlap between the two.
Right.
You're not taking any of, like, say, the footprint where the stairs are. Anything like that, that is going to be used in the new deck proposed or stairway of the new deck. And so what I'm looking at here in these pictures is not really a deck, but a stairway and a landing. Because the deck is is so small, it's not really a deck.
Yeah, we have like a little table and a chair out there, but that's it.
Yeah. And and that goes to our debate that Bill and I were having as to what, how do we approach this, whether it's a variance or whether it's a special permit? If it's a remove and replace in kind, Bill, correct me now, that's a special permit. But if it's a new new event, it's a variance.
Uh, if it's a new event that ex- exacerbates. The nonconformity with the recent court exceptions that we're talking about, that was kind of where we. We have to discuss that a little bit further, but for this particular project, um. What the applicant is proposing is simply an extension of an existing nonconformity.
Uh, side yard setback.
Exactly, and and it's um tidying up. The 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 side nonconformity as, you know, as best can be done maintaining the structure, so um. I I think that uh in this case, it's unquestionably special permit.
So you're saying it's a special permit, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's it to me, it's a relatively, this one's pretty straightforward, yeah.
Alright.
Considering the new rulings, then. We can explain that later to the board.
Okay, so we're looking at a special permit for demolishing everything we see in the right hand picture. On on this outside the building. And then you're gonna put something behind the structure.
Right.
And the the diagram, if I pull up my copy here, says you're gonna be. Okay with the rear yard setback, you want fifteen feet on the rear yard and you're okay with that, right? You've got, it's like eighteen feet.
Yeah, that was what the um surveyor put on, but the our architect did fifteen, which is what we're planning.
Alright, so I get it, does anybody else have questions? Silence is deafening.
Should I stop sharing my screen? Is that?
That's okay, you can do that, thank you.
Okay, Paul, I'll 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 clear up the silence, I have no questions. I just wanted to feel more comfortable, that's all, you're welcome.
So I see another person on the call, are you speaking in in favor against, are you a co- the applicant?
We should open public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay, open public hearing, there, that's done.
I'm also the applicant, I'm Pamela.
That's what I thought, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
But other than that, there is nobody on the Zoom meeting that could speak in favor or in opposition to this, other than the people that want it.
That way.
So, this being an easy, easy question now. Any opinions? So we can have our public deliberation. Any comments or thoughts? Should we approve?
I mean, I I, to to me, Paul, to your point earlier, it's a fairly simple, straightforward one. Um, you're you're re- they're removing. You know, what appears to be a more, a larger code obstacle. And they're going to just extend something that's. It's already, uh, how do I want to say, an exception, so it's fifteen feet, I think, instead of eighteen, I I forget what the numbers were. But they're just extending that, which is no harm to anything in my in my view.
Okay, I'm sorry, can we close public hearing, please?
Go for it.
Sure, go ahead. Public hearing is closed, do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question first, if you'd have time. Um, so are you gonna be removing one of the windows to put an egress onto the deck?
Yeah, so we are going to swap out, um, the, we'll replace the current door with a window and then put a door where. The one of the windows at the back is. Because entrance from the driveway to the house as well.
Sure, yeah, no, that that makes that makes sense to have your the uh the egress there, is that the second egress of the house or is that a third egress?
It's the second egress.
Okay, so that's.
There's a front door and then that's the rear door, yeah.
So that's that's very important to have.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, okay, no, I have no more questions.
Okay, so Bill wants me to close the public hearing, but not close the public meeting.
Right.
I think that's the phraseology.
That's it.
So I need a vote to do that, or do we need a motion first?
Motion and vote.
Harry made the motion.
I, yeah, I move on what you just stated, Paul, about closing the public. Hearing, I forget which way.
Hearing, but not the public meeting.
Right, sorry.
So we get a second? Page seconds, all in favor? Okay, all in favor, and then then we need to debate, discuss, and figure out what we're gonna do with it. Do we have any discussion?
I have no problem with it.
I have no problem with it.
Then I need a motion. Motion to approve as as written or with stipulation that the old foundation stick out thing gets torn off as well, what do you want to say, guys?
Well, we want to have it, we want to have a determination first for the criteria for special permit.
Uh, you and your protocol.
Sorry.
I haven't done this for a few months, this is great. Special permit criteria. Social, economic, community needs which are served, traffic flow and safety, adequacy of utilities, neighborhood character. Impacts on the natural environment and fiscal impact. So I think the only one that kicks out is something to think about is neighborhood character and structure, right? For the special permit.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, I think, I think you're right, Paul, I think that is the only thing that might stick out at all, and what the petition has stated is that other. Uh. Homes in their neighborhood already have a rear deck set up like this. And so it would be, you know, conforming to what the rest have, they would not be putting something up that would be abnormal for the neighborhood, for what I understood.
Yeah. So. We want to reflect on the other five items there? Social, economic, community needs, traffic flow, utilities, natural environment, fiscal impact? I don't see anything that is gonna make any impact on any of those, so we can just acknowledge that it's not gonna make any impact, is that right?
Yeah, that's what I would say.
Okay, you got that, Bill, on your records?
I do.
Good, so. Back to my question, do we want to put it with the condition that that old foundation piece goes away, as well as the old deck? Landing, whatever it is, the stairway?
Sure.
Yes.
And so then I need a motion to say that, or do we just say, as I sort of described it?
Well, okay.
I would say it's a condition.
Condition.
Sorry, Melissa.
Oh. Do you want a motion?
Well, we gotta, we gotta decide pro or con on this.
Alright, I make a motion that we approve the special permit application. Of Rhiannon Roberts and Pam Mullins at thirty Roosevelt Street in Maynard. Um, to allow the replacement of a nonconforming deck. Uh, with a new deck um that would not exacerbate the existing nonconformity. Um. And. In so uh allowing that they would remove the existing foundation and deck that sticks out from the house currently. Um. And we find that um approval of the special permit does not um.
Eric.
Have a negative impact on the character of the neighborhood.
Good, we get a second?
Second.
Jerry seconds. All in favor? Okay, so we got a unanimous vote on that, congratulations, now, this is where I like to put Bill on the spot. Tell him what happens and when, Bill.
Well, what happens now is that we will draft an appen- a uh a uh decision and uh. Uh, record it with the clerk probably within the next four or five days at tops. Um, there is an appeal period, so your butters who showed up tonight, I guess, or didn't, um, have an opportunity. Uh, to appeal the decision, state law, it's twenty day appeal period. Um, we will notify you when we record it with the clerk. And once the twenty days has elapsed, um, you want to check back in with the clerk and you'll get a um. A letter of no appeal, hopefully, I can't, and um from there, uh, you can go right to building permits. Um, the one thing the building commissioner will ask you to do, I should have corrected myself on this, uh, after you pick up the. Uh, letter of no appeal, they will want it uh recorded with the registry of deeds. Which is, uh, you can do it in Cambridge, or if you have an attorney or something, they can usually do it through. Um, and the reason is for that is to protect you, so that in the, you know, i- in the event you sell the house or whatever, there's a record that this was permitted. Um, if you have any questions, you know, you can always reach out to my office. Um, although, I I this one, uh, I think um Julia must have taken this one, like, I I don't remember this particular one, but uh in any event.
Yeah.
Either of us can, will be happy to help you with it. And that's how it works.
Right, thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Hey.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.
So.
Mister, yeah.
We, we have a no show.
We do, and I I I've, I am surprised because uh I know this person does travel. For work and so on, and the contractor is in the office frequently checking on it. Um. Last. Hmm, what I would suggest is this. Why don't I brief the board basically on the building commissioners?
Well, before you do that, I'd like to get into. The protocol. Of a no show. And this is a no show that was postponed from another no show. Somebody stood up for him at the last meeting, saying, oh, yeah, they're in an airport coming home or something.
Yeah, yeah.
If they don't give us the courtesy of showing up at our meeting, do we just write them off and say, you're done?
Well, in all fairness, let me check my email too, because it's. You know, I um. I have not received anything there, but um. It's unusual, and this is not a um, well, I I understand the board's position, I respect your time, and I don't want to. Uh, at all make light of it, I can only tell you that I had every indication. That the applicant was going to be here, the contractor's been at the office several times, um. And the applicant has been working with staff, uh, and we expected. Uh, with with uh other staff. Uh, but I don't know what to say, it's a. I I think I would request that the board um. Continue it, um, if that's their pleasure, just because of the effort that the um applicant has put to try to get things together, I don't have any. But I can't make any excuses.
I drove by the property today. In preparation, because I was a little bothered by the amount of coverage that they have on that land. And just by driving by, it's a very crowded property.
That was my impression.
We shouldn't this. I know we shouldn't discuss.
Details, but you emphasized on this already, Bill, in the write-up, this is where I got a little testy in the description.
Yeah.
And I agree with your description.
Yeah.
And so as we move this forward, and you say there's a contractor involved. I'm worried that they're gonna spend the money before they get any approval from us.
Uh, well, I I don't disagree, I understand that completely. And um I I I, all I meant was that it was not like a casual thing about, I want, I didn't take it that way. I could be wrong, and I'm not gonna go out on a limb any more than that, you know, but. Um, I I, you know, there's issues afoot. Uh, with the. Site itself that I, you know, that you and I discussed.
Yeah.
Uh, it didn't, we didn't take into account that the applicant was not gonna show. But uh again, I don't, I I understand there's issues, but this board's time is is not. I I respect it totally, I'm not gonna say anymore.
So why don't, you know, let let me float something then. How about the three strikes, you're out, we'll postpone until next month, and it'll be an exciting one next month, because we have one twenty three summer on board again. And and they'll be on that one too. And if they don't show for that one, they're done.
Yeah. I, I think that's more than reasonable.
Um, so does that mean that, um, when you say that they're done, that if they really want to go forward after this, that they would have to reapply?
Yes.
Right, okay.
And the question is, if they reapply. Can they avoid the the uh moratorium issue? That if they're denied the permit or variance or whatever, they have to wait so many months before they can reapply, I don't know how that fits here.
But the way it would fit, the way i- it would fit would be if. The board always has a prerogative to open the hearing. And you can hear it, nobody says the applicant has to be there. It's just good form, I mean, it's like, um, you know, i- i- it's something you would assume that is always good to be there. Um, but to what you're talking about, and just if the rest of the board is not familiar with it, what the chair is talking about. To avoid repetitive petitions, um, the law states that um you can't. If you are denied, you can't apply with an identical application with it for two years. Sometimes, like, we had one a couple of years ago, I don't know if it was planning board or zoning board, but. Like, for example, somebody applied with a three, no, it must have been a planning board, because they applied for a three-story building, the board said no. They came back months later with a two-story, it was not a repetitive. Petition, but if you come back, you say, I want a relief for, you know, whatever, and it's the same thing, it could be potentially. The 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 way you, um, if the board, for whatever reason. Uh, wanted to deny um. Uh, an application and not have the um two-year delay. They could deny without prejudice. And um. The way it's actually, the proper way to do it is you allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
That's right, withdraw without prejudice, but they gotta be able to be here to do that.
Right, right, we've done that a couple of times for stuff, I can't remember what, but we have.
So let's, let's cut to the chase, let's open the hearing and continue it. Right, so we'll open the hearing for whatever that street name was.
That it is uh.
Fairfield, right?
Fairfield Street.
Thirty-one Fairfield Street.
And. Wherever.
And there's definitely nobody on here, right, nobody else?
Nobody's sitting in your waiting room, right?
No, I saw double checking, no. No, I saw double checking, no. No.
So to make it formal, I'll I'll read. The public hearing, the variance application filed by Elizabeth Peterson, thirty-one Fairfield Street, Maynard. Subject property is a nonconforming, single-family dwelling on a nonconforming lot located in S two family residence district. Per Maynard Town Bylaw, section five one, for applicants requesting a variance from the maximum building coverage. Fifteen percent? It doesn't look right.
That's what it says.
S S two, I think it is fifteen percent.
Yeah, that's what it says, the building coverage is at fifteen percent, yeah. Extending to nonconformity uh from approximately twenty-five to thirty-one percent. And increasing impervious coverage of forty percent to forty-three percent. And so I'm gonna ask for the applicant. The applicant's not here. And so then I want a request or a motion to continue to our next date certain, which is June something.
It would be June twenty-six, Monday, June twenty-six.
We get a motion to that?
Still moved.
We get a second? Uh, Brad will section that one, thank you, Brad.
That was Jerry and Brad, right?
Yep.
Yes.
And all in favor? Yay, so. Next time, we'll have to make it, and it and it should be a good meeting, because we we have one twenty-three summer. Do we have another one too?
I think we do.
I thought there was a second one.
Something just, yes, something came in, you're right, it is a um. I can't remember what it is, but yeah, we do.
Okay.
Um, I I have a question of that.
Yeah.
Um, how was the order going to go? For that night, because if summer twenty-one, twenty-three Summer Street goes on first, that will take up the entire meeting, probably, nobody will.
Well, that's a great question. That's a great question, Brad. Um, it's up to the chair, I will sequence it by um petitions, so like by the date. So one twenty-three summer. Then um I will put it on the agenda, one twenty-three summer. Then um, what is this one, thirty? Thirty-one Fairfield.
Thirty-one Fairfield.
And then the new one. Um, I would say that with one twenty-three summer. We've heard, we've heard, we've heard a lot of the information. And um, so it'd be, you know, and if the chair wants to, if Paul wants to redo it or reorder it, we can do that too. You know, based on um.
Well, I I gotta find out what that third uh case would be.
Uh, well, I can tell, it it's not a, it was not a biggie. If you say um. Room extension, I I think it is a. I just, I just was working on today. Um, a room extension or a a room addition. Uh, it would be a special permit because it is under twenty-five percent of. Or area ratio increase. And their uh building commissioner is uh has categorized as a de minimis. Special permit, so I would. Yeah, it it's pretty straightforward not to.
So the other thing that we need to. Deal with, and this is more of a Bill and me thing with town council, is to figure out what this new bylaw does for one twenty-three summer.
Do you, do you want me to run over, oh, the new bylaw?
One twenty-three summer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well.
And we were gonna have a discussion with the attorney.
Right.
To sort of set the stage.
Okay. I think honestly of that one, I don't think it does much. Um, because, you know, we use that, that's a model, like for, you know, it was. I mean, we really did, it's kind of like. You know, we're like, all right, this regular, I mean, that was a tight decision. And the question, if I remember it, is that they wanted to have some changes. I don't recall what the changes were at the um. At the last hearing, offhand, I can't remember, but they were a few, but but it. As it stands right now, I can't see any change with new bylaw, can you, Brad? I mean, I couldn't see any change.
No, the uh, the the only uh thing about it was if if somebody had come in as a um. A application that had been approved as a trade shop. When you go to reapply, the trade shop is no longer there, and it becomes a IB business.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's.
But I mean, like, the way we 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 regulated that by impact. You know, you think about it, everything on that was impact, which was the intent of the new. The new file, I mean.
And if you go.
One of the others, like, maybe if we had, I can't, we haven't had any problems with any of the others, but. If we had another, when we have another trade shop come in for renewal, you know, if there was something that we. I can't even think of a good example, because they've all been.
I mean, if the conditions weren't being met from the trade shop, you'd want to make sure that they're enforced.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm thinking, Mike, if if like, like the coffee, I uh, the only guy I remember for sure was the coffee guy.
Coffee roaster, yeah.
The coffee roaster came in, we gave his con- his conditions were based on the impact. I mean, we were kind of doing that anyway.
Right.
You know, so we, I mean, we would say we keep the same conditions. I don't know that we'd add anything else if we hadn't had any problem. I don't know.
I I think that's where I would go as well, but we can't talk out of school here.
No, no, no.
I I do want to get town councils read on this and how to approach it.
Okay. Put that, I'll I'll set it up tomorrow, Paul. Are you available most days right now?
Yeah, unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
Well, yeah, I'm just sort of vegging out here trying to invent projects at the house. That's what gets, you know, when you get to be an old fart, you know, thing, things get changed, do what you want.
Well, I have, I'm, you may not have noticed it, but I'm creeping up on middle age.
Okay, now, Paul, I'm older than everybody on this screen right now. I'm still working. Just keep on working.
Well, maybe it's because you enjoy what you're doing.
Well, I do property management, I do safety training, I do safety inspections.
So you're over seventy then, you old fart?
Uh, well over seventy.
Oh, good for you.
No way.
I'm seventy-eight.
Wow.
You are, are you really?
Yeah, seventy-eight.
You look great for seventy-eight. I I think he's teasing us, Paul, he's. By the way, we already have an appointment with Lisa.
That's right.
Oh, we already, I already set it up, I mean.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
But I I wanted to remind you of that, so that we're ready with a bunch of questions.
Yeah, it's set up already, okay.
It's a big unknown of how do we do if this and if that and so on and so forth, and now we know what we need to ask. We just, you know, let's budget her time appropriately and say. We're gonna call this meeting, it's a continuance of a meeting that was pretty noisy, and what do we need to do?
Okay. We will do it, and we already set up, I forgot about that, she's coming. Oh, that's the other thing, yeah, she'll be there, the attorney will be there.
This is another Zoom meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah, we got Zoom meetings, as long as you want them for the next two years.
So do we move to, so do we change the order different than what what you had said? Uh, uh, Bill, to to more to what Paul, I think, was saying, or maybe Brad said, maybe we put one twenty-three summer last. Only because it could. Have an extended period of time of discussion, because we need to, I think, get that one, put the bid.
If 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 that's the board and the chair's um desire, I can do whatever you want.
Yeah, I I think it should be the last one on the agenda.
I think the other two you could do pretty quick. So.
Yeah, but yeah, without cutting the other two short, but but give them what, you know, their petitions require.
Right.
Uh, I think we can get them, you know, done and over with, without cutting anybody in, you know, short at all. Uh, but then allow one twenty-three summer uh uh to, because it just seems to have. Legs and arms everywhere, and it would be nice to be able to get it settled.
I will reorder. Agenda.
If if everybody agrees, I.
Make a motion if you want, but I agree.
We're good. And I'm too, I'm too old for making motions.
But you're good at seconding.
My flex is good.
Um, the other thing, Paul, that I'm doing, um, I I reached out to the planning board on. Uh, to find out who they want to use um. For um less to work with Leslie on um the special permit for um.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, firearms. And I'll let you know about that um. And um. Let's see, what was the other thing you told, oh, minutes, okay. Um.
But I had a crazy idea for you the other day on that call about. Looking at the various property coverages and which ones in a S two might better be a general residence and so on and so forth. And draw zigzaggy lines of all the districts, zoning dis- different zoning districts to sort of match the current. Uh, housing structures.
I, yeah, I mean, that's my my opinion with this whole thing, because when when the board started asking me last year, Bill, why are we doing? So many variances? Now, part of it will be explained, you know, with the new court rulings that came out just for the for the board, just because you've heard me allude to it a couple of times. Um, for single-family. And two-family homes. The courts have ruled on several variances. And the town council's writing us a a asthma, write an opinion that explains everything, but in a nutshell, some of the things. Um, the building commissioner is able to make a call on the spot before he sends them to the board. And so what may have previously been a variance would be a special permit in some cases. Um, it's a little bit, um, it makes sense when they explain it, but I asked them to write up something, so we'll have that before the next meeting. The reason I'm telling you that is that for the little, you know, we did. We've done a couple of like variances that were like, you know, a couple of feet or, you know, whatever, and we called them de minimis and things like that. Um, so it's it's a little bit more formalized for that. The other thing is that um. We're going to end up with a um. I guess, a um. Reeval, well, Paul's asking, is there, I've been. Confused because. When some of the zoning was dropped on our existing parcels, you know. It was just kind of like you have to think of it as like a big layer, just going over everything. Um. When we have a single-family uh one or two districts. And some of these. Parcels are smaller than we allow in our general residential districts. It not only creates a a a nonconformity on the spot. For both the structure and the property, but it can also restrict, you know, improvements to the house that may. Be detrimental to the neighborhood, and we've been fooling around with different, I have been, with different ways we could remedy that, but it's 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 strange. And and tonight's. Um. Project would 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 illustrate, you know, that, and I was trying to figure out ways to come up with. Proportionate formulas, I think I talked to Paige, Paige, I talked to you about that, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we had a quick discussion, yeah.
And um. It's 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 a, it's tough, because. It's a, it's a toughie, but something we can work out, but my suggestion would be, let's listen to the um, or let's see what the. New memo says from town council and see how we go forward. With it, I count town council will be at the next meeting, like I said, so we'll have. You know, we're not gonna have to wait for anything, I'm just like. And um. Well, that's what I got.
That'll be good, because besides one twenty-three summer, this one is a no show, if they actually do show that time. It'll be good to get, you know, any comment that comes from council about. The size of that lot and the kind of coverage and how it's in the wrong district for what they have already.
Yeah. And I've checked the waiting room one more time, I, no, there's just nobody, no. Just us.
Okay, so that being said, we've been on the on the call for an hour now. And it's time to to get another motion on the floor. Yes, Jerry?
Go move.
Thank you, all in favor of dismissal? Yay, we're done. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'll be in touch, Leslie, about the um planning board.
Okay, mm-hmm, good, all right, hi.
Hi, everybody.